And we will call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Jennifer, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Robinger?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Patel? Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Ms. Shue?
Here.
Awesome. Looks like we have quorum. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull out of the consent agenda and move into new business? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No motion.
Second. Second again. Sorry, my computer's. Roll call back.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Robinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And Ms. Shue?
Yes.
Okay, and our... Something wrong? What's wrong?
Can you power off the TV?
Yes, I'm trying, sorry.
I'm running horribly late. This is on me, I'm working on it. Okay.
Okay, great.
Well, that's stretching, but yeah.
You know what? We're doing the best we can with what we have.
Present.
Okay, so our first agenda item here is the presentation of the United Against Hate Resolution with Cook County Commissioner Scott Britton. And we're going to read the resolution that was approved.
Last month by the board.
Great, okay, so the resolution is, whereas the Northbrook Public Library stands with Cook County in the pursuit of creating a more equitable, welcoming, and connected community for all, and whereas the Northbrook Public Library is dedicated to fostering a more informed, engaged, and empowered community that actively embraces inclusion and disavows hate and bigotry in all forms, and whereas hate crime statistics have trended upward in the country and our local community in recent years, Cook County United Against Hate serves as an inspiring symbol of the commitment to end discrimination and disrupting justice where it exists, and whereas the Cook County United Against Hate Campaign represents a dedication to end intolerance by providing visual, verbal, and educational pathways to stand against bigotry in all forms, and whereas the Northbrook Public Library champions the Cook County United Against Hate message and encourages its community to learn from those with different lived experiences, to question hateful acts whenever seen or heard, and to support efforts towards social justice, and be it resolved that the Northbrook Public Library Board of Trustees and staff formally adopt the Cook County United Against Hate pledge and commit to fighting injustice, intolerance, and hate and welcoming all people regardless of their race, religion, ethnicity, age, gender identity, sexual orientation, disabilities, class, or other backgrounds. That was passed unanimously last month.
It sure was.
Commissioner Britton, would you like to say a few words?
I would, and thank you so much for having me here today and welcoming a resident of Glenview to Northbrook.
The library is here for all.
Ah, you know what, Kate, I feel I've spent a lot of time here, and that's a definite positive in my experience. So I am Cook County Commissioner Scott Britton of the 14th District, representing all of Northbrook. And I just want to say again, thank you for adopting United Against Hate. It's been interesting since we started this process over two years ago, for what started as kind of a response to antisemitic literature that's dropped off in multiple places throughout Northbrook, Glenview, including my house, and all over the North Shore, to what we have seen frequently, not just in the context of antisemitism, but we've seen it in so many different contexts. And particularly, we even have a current presidential candidate who brings out what I think is unfortunate references to trans people and identifying people as the other, which is, I think, the concept that we're trying to at least call out and to address. It is unfortunate to me that I feel like our libraries now have to be on the front line of this fight. You have experienced it directly in the bomb threats that have been received, not just by the Northbrook Library, but throughout the northern suburbs. And I do think that unfortunately, while you have been forced to do this, you have stood up for the concepts that knowledge eliminates bigotry and hate, because the more you learn, the more you understand. And it truly is a willful ignorance that I think starts so much of the discrimination and bigotry that we deal with every day in our society. So, you know, I'm a huge fan of libraries, I helped build the one in Glenview, and I do believe that this is where we need to stand up. You know, we have states banning books, we have people trying to eliminate, you know, a broad description of different ideas within our society, and you don't have to agree with them, but I think we have to at least respect those who are different than us. And I think our diversity is one of our true strengths. And so I do thank not only you for adopting this resolution, but, you know, it has been really, really gratifying for me to be able to partner with the library in so many different things. Eclipse was one of the funnest things we did out in Parkland. And that we're doing one on combating cyberbullying, which we're not just using your facility, we're partnering with the library. And that's another thing I have to owe you a thanks for. So I really appreciate that, and that is during Social Equity Week and also September 22nd on Sunday, so I hope a lot of people will come to that. So I know you have a lot of work to do, I probably won't stay for the whole thing, but I can say, I can tell you that, you know, we do appreciate everything that you guys do, and I want to be one of your resources and continue to be here for whatever I can do to help both the library and whatever other issues may come up that exist in the county. We are great partners, we are tremendous friends, and I very much appreciate you adopting this with me today. Thank you.
And now we're going to pause the board meeting and do a quick picture to, with the United Against Hate logo out in the lab.
Great, thanks everyone. Moving on to public comment, it looks like there are some members of the public here, if anyone would like to speak.
Would you, would you mind coming up here? That way we can make sure to catch your audio for anyone on the live stream.
My name is Karen Doris, and I have been a Northbrook resident since 1984. I am a relatively newcomer to the chair yoga class. I did not join it until after the pandemic, when I decided I really didn't want to go back to the health club yet. And I have enjoyed it, come back and sleep. And I recall that there were two chair yoga classes at 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock on Friday mornings. That was before the pandemic. So the library did cut chair yoga by 50%. And I want to make sure that chair yoga does not get cut to every other week come next year. That is why I am here. And this is really the only class that is geared towards seniors, and I want to make sure it continues. That's it.
Well done.
Thank you.
And I came tonight because I've been here before, and I asked you to continue yoga. And I told you all my reasons then, but I wanted to publicly thank the board and Kate for continuing the program and listening to us. And when I came in, I was so happy to be greeted at the door with the information that you're going to continue it in 2025 too. So thank you very much, and I'll be sure to spread the word. Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
That's it for yoga.
Well, thank you for being here, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
It's okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for your service.
Yes.
It's worth a try.
Yeah.
We're fine.
That was not convincing.
I'll do better next time. Okay, moving on to staff reports.
So a couple items I wanted to mention that were in my report. One is that I will be off the last week of the month visiting John's family, and I guess they have my family as well, visiting our family in Michigan, John's mother. And Kelly will, of course, be here in my absence and will be managing everything, which hopefully will be nothing.
Right.
That's the goal.
Nothing's gonna break.
Yeah. And I also wanted to mention something I had in my report that Commissioner Britton had mentioned, which is the partnership that we have for the Upstanders documentary showing, followed by a Q and A, that is going to be moderated by Commissioner Britton on September 22nd. This is in partnership, I have the list, because there's a lot of partners, with Cook County United Against Hate, the Villages Community Relation Commission, Catch, as well as, because we keep adding sponsors, which is awesome, the Illinois Holocaust Museum, and that is all four of our sponsors. We are very excited to be partnering with them. As Commissioner Britton mentioned, this is something that we take very seriously at the library, we want to be strong community partners, we want to stand up in helping make Northbrook be an inclusive and welcoming community, and part of that is having events like this. So the screening, followed by the Q and A, will be on September 22nd from 3:00 to 5:00. I'd like to personally invite every board member to come and attend. I know I'm looking forward to being there. It is a supposedly, a very uplifting documentary, I'm really looking forward to it, I haven't seen it yet, I decided I want to be surprised at it, but everyone is invited to attend, and if you do plan to attend, just give me a heads up, so we can make sure to get you registered. I know the newsletter just dropped, so we're sure that there's going to be a high interest in this, and so I want to make sure we have enough seats for everyone.
When is it again?
It is September 22nd at 3:00 for the Upstanders documentary showing, and then that will be followed by a Q and A with moderated by Commissioner Britton. And I'm not sure who all is on the panel, but he's going to be moderating yet, so.
As a member of the...
Yeah, I'm on the Village Community Commission, which sort of got the ball rolling on this, and I believe, I believe our chair, Jennifer Saperstein, is still working on that, but the goal would be to have a mental health professional and at least one student who has dealt with this and wants to share their experience, so I think it's not finalized yet.
Which we know from our Let's Talk series that we've done, to let's talk about different lived experiences, that that is a very powerful way to convey information and has real impact, we know, in the community. I also wanted to just mention something that was in my report about some staff departures. We have a couple retirements that are happening at the end of this month. Barb Mayer, our Technical Services Manager, is retiring after 26 years. She, she said she, she started work here in the 90s and said, "I'll, I'll try it out for a week or two and see if I like it." And it turns out she did. We are very much going to miss her. She is retiring so that she can take care of her grandkids and stuff with them, which is fun and I imagine going to be a little exhausting. So we are in the process of investigating for what kind of we want, what we want to do with technical services. Obviously, this is a critical department in the library. They, they bring in all of our new materials, we add about 3,000 items a month. I also feel, as does Kelly, that anytime there is a management position that opens, it's a good time to pause and reflect and to see what does the library need, not only today, but thinking towards the future. And so we're going to be doing an exploratory process and have, have invited Kim Hegland, who is our Circulation Manager, to serve as our interim Technical Services Manager, so she's going to be doing a dual role for a few months, while we explore what would best meet the needs of the library in terms of management of the Technical Services Department. So we're excited to do this, we'll be exploring what other libraries do, as well as looking at what our needs are here, because we recognize that while every library is exactly the same, they also are completely different. And so we want to figure out what is going on in the world in terms of how we have structured things, and also think about here, what locally would best meet our needs. This is, of course, becoming even more critical as the types of materials that we add to the collection are changing, so we want to be able to make sure that we can keep up with the changing needs of our community, while also looking and seeing, are we still doing things in the most efficient way possible? Are there any opportunities where we can streamline and reorganize, not only to benefit saving dollars, but also to think about how we can increase staff capacity and workload? So that is one of the retirements. Another retirement that is happening at the end of this month is Hala Hadad, who is our Adult Services Assistant Manager. Hala has likewise been here for multiple decades and is retiring at the end of the month as well. We are going to be replacing her position, she's in charge of essentially kind of overseeing and making sure we are maintaining all of our adult collections, which is, as you can imagine, a sizable job. While we do have a lot of selectors in our library, we rely on our staff kind of overseeing those to make sure that we are maintaining and meeting the needs of our community. Again, made more challenging sometimes by the increasing demands on eBooks versus physical books, audiobooks, that we've talked about in recent months. So we will be replacing her position and look forward to welcoming a new person into that role. I also wanted to give the board a bit more of an update on our Facilities Manager departure. Anna has hired two interim facility managers. They come from Local 399, which is the Operating Engineers Union, and neither of them was able to take a full-time interim position, so we're kind of partnering two together and are very excited, because they have both worked together on different buildings for over a decade, so they have a very strong collaborative relationship already. And they have been here for a couple weeks and have been systematically going through every building system to determine what its state is, what needs to happen, making sure that we're maintaining and have strong documentation around how we are caring for and maintaining the systems. So Anna has been working very closely with them. Dan McQuinn and Tom Speltz are their names, and we anticipate having them here through the end of the year. We have not posted for a Facility Manager position yet, because we want to give Dan and Tom some time to kind of give us an accounting of how things are in terms of our building systems, and get, get our house in order a little bit, if you will. So they will be meeting with us in September, and we're hoping to be able to post our Facilities Manager position then in early October, and hopefully have someone hired by the end of the year. So we have a lot of, a lot of moving pieces right now. Kelly is finishing up, or starting the interview process with our Youth Services Manager for our Assistant Manager, Amanda Margus, who resigned in June. And so there is a fair number of management positions open, but we are in good shape, but it is something just to be aware of as we talk about some of the other things that we have on our plate as we move forward. And that is everything I have for my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions from any other parts of the report.
I have a question, but wanted to thank you and the administration team for the thoughtfulness in filling these positions, to make sure we're looking at what the library needs long-term. I think that's something not enough organizations do, and it's nice to know that there's strategy in filling these positions.
Yeah, while also making sure that we're not overburdening staff. Kelly's had lots of conversations with Kim to be like, is this doable?
Right.
Any questions for Kate? Board member reports?
I'm just...
Pigeons?
Yeah, pigeons, man. I was unexpectedly delighted by the program on Monday night, The Secret Life of Pigeons, which was led by some very dedicated volunteers in the Great Lakes Pigeon, Great Lakes Pigeon Rescue. I had not realized there would be actual pigeons, and there were. And they made a fairly compelling case for why we should maybe rethink how we approach these birds.
But not literally approaching them.
They do, they are very, very bold. They told a tale of swooping down on a particularly unhappy-looking pigeon in New York and picking it up and making it better and then putting it back out on the street. However, these pigeons were pets that they brought, one pet of the main speaker and a couple of other they were sort of fostering. And the people there were delighted. I cannot tell you how many of the participants wished to have pigeons on their shoulders and heads. I should add, these pigeons were wearing beautifully designed pants, which took the stress out of handling them in some ways, and changes the pants. You know, that question, that question was asked.
I should have, I didn't.
Yeah, there were many questions about the pants.
Did they wear diapers too?
That's what they basically are.
The pants, okay. The pants diapers.
They buy them from a company that this is what they do.
They're children's.
I'm not sure that's the only... But I think it was very different. I went partially because I saw and I thought, why did you do this? Why? As I said before, I tried to pick things that are, are not...
Out of your comfort zone.
Out of my comfort zone, and something that I wouldn't probably naturally gravitate to, something different, because my goal is to get a real 360 look at, experience of what our library has to offer. And this one, I thought to myself, why? Why? I need to go. And so I went, and I will tell you, it was, it had lots of people there, and they were all very interested, and the volunteers are very interested in pigeons, and I was delighted to hold a pigeon.
Like real delight?
You know, it was very gentle, it didn't do anything, I mean, it just sort of...
Thank you for representing us. Wonderful experience.
And it was, and it was an interesting way to spend an evening, and I'm delighted that our library is so eclectic and interesting.
And there are lovely pictures on the library's social media, if you have not seen.
Oh, really? And I will be sure to pass along your praise to Jill Franklin...
She was wonderful.
Who organized this event and does a lot of our sustainability programming, as well as our health and wellness, so I will be sure to... I know that you spoke with her, because you're in the picture with her, but I will certainly pass that on, that her organizing efforts for fun programs is, is well received.
It's just not something you expect to see the library, and that was one reason I came.
How many people were there?
You know, I'm going to say Jill could give a better, I'm going to say at least 20.
Could you look at communicate?
Yeah, I should, you know, it was...
Kelly can tell us. In a minute.
It was, it was, there were plenty of people there, yes. I was, I would have maybe thought more kids, but there was just one.
I mean, it was at 7:00.
It was at 7:00, so, yeah. And yes, if you go on the, the library's Facebook page and probably Instagram...
Yep.
There's many happy, many, many happy people.
It was on Monday.
Okay.
13?
Yes.
12?
Is this something you would recommend for children?
Sure.
We did have a sloth last week.
22.
Yeah, for one of our children's programs.
Steve. Sloth. He's no longer with us. Steve the sloth.
Wait, he passed away?
He did.
What? I didn't know that. Okay, maybe we'll recommend to Jill that if she's looking for other animal-themed programs, maybe a sloth program for adults.
I don't know how anyone can top that, but are there... I was just going to mention, I stopped by the Friends of the Library book sale last month and found myself purchasing many books, which is not surprising, but it looked very well-attended and well-organized, so kudos to the Friends of the Library for that. And I found myself at the farmer's market yesterday, was that just yesterday?
Yep.
Correct.
Because...
Yes, today's...
People eat a lot of blueberries in the summer in my house, and got to stop by and visit with the library at the farmer's market, so what a nice community partnership.
We had over, we had over 350 people stop by the table during the farmer's market.
Wow.
I don't know how many books the Friends gave away, but I know that there was...
They did have a lot of books out.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else from anyone else? No unfinished business, so we'll move into new business, starting with the Executive Director Goal Check-In.
Yeah, so as the board may recall from a few months ago, we did my annual evaluation and set goals for this fiscal year, and have a new process. And so one of the things that Stacy and Jay and I talked about when we were doing it was having more regular check-ins on the goals throughout the year. And so this is the first check-in of that, it's been three months, hard to believe, but it is now the end of the first quarter of our fiscal year. And so I put together some information on kind of what I have been working on and where we are at with the various goals. I'm happy to say that one of the six goals, as of the consent agenda today, is now completed, and that's the succession plan. So that's exciting, especially because as you've heard, we've had some unexpected things pop up. So we also have our strategic plan and EDI Goals Implementation Goal, which we now have the activity plan and are starting to work on that, as you've seen in my report. In the coming months, I will be working more on that and working on tailoring my Director's Report to more closely match the goals of the strategic plan. We've been working on that first at the management level, and then the next step will be bringing that to the board meeting. So that will be coming, and that will be something that will just be an ongoing thing that we will continue revisiting and revising. The staffing analysis is something that we have not started yet, nor do we plan to start. Becky and I have talked preliminarily about it, but we'll be starting that in Q3. And Q4 will be when we'll be looking more at the HR Policy Review, as well as the Website Review and Improvement. So we have not done anything on those, but we have started preliminary talks about them. The other thing that I have been working on most closely with Anna is our Master Facilities Plan Revision. As the board knows from last month, we've been working with that, and we'll be, talked about it with the management team, and we'll be looking into doing more with the architects and bringing that back to the board in November. So we are making good progress on it. So I will say that with all of this, and some of the other things that are unexpected, I do anticipate possibly for the next quarter, depending on how things play out over the next month or so, we might need to adjust some of these, just to account for changes and things that are happening. But maybe not. And so this is good, I think, good news now, but I would love to know from the board if you have any questions, and was this a good amount of information? I'm always trying to be Goldilocks, right? Not too much and not too little. To see, since this is the first time we've done this, if you have any feedback on anything you would like to see done the same or done differently for the future for this.
These are not written in stone, so...
Just in digital.
But when you have all of these other things that are unexpected, I think, I can only speak for myself, but you have day-to-day management, all of that is part of the evaluation, whether it's got a label on it or you can check it off. And I mean, I would, I certainly appreciate the update on these things, but it's not, it's not finite. You do so much, and so I don't think that, it's not meant to be a burden.
Oh, no.
It's not meant to be more. It's meant to be directive in that when you have choices to make, you'll move towards these goals. But the day-to-day is the critical piece of it, so...
And I would say that most of these goals are in service ultimately of the day-to-day, and so to me, it is figuring out what are the things that are going to help bring us to, you know, continuing to serve the community to the best of our ability, and what are the things that will ultimately help us create more space, because we're creating things and doing things more efficiently. So I appreciate that, and I also think that, you know, it is, it is important to have goals, it's also important to be willing to adjust them.
Exactly.
And I have Kelly to keep me in line.
Kate, I mean, if you're going to use this going forward, I would think that for the next update...
Yes.
You would just take the same format, and below where it says August Update Add, so we can then see what was done in August, see what's done afterwards.
Yes, that was my plan.
Does that, I mean, does this work in terms of volume of information?
Yes.
Especially, you aren't doing this quarterly, so...
Yes.
That means, I think, we don't need quite as many details. And think how easy it will be to do your self-evaluation.
I know.
Actually, that is a good thing about you.
Thank you. No, I actually thought this was really great, because it did not take me, and really, it should be all, it all should feed into each other, right? So...
Well, and your report also...
Yeah.
...fills in the blanks in many cases, so that we know other things that...
Yes.
...you have to address.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, Civic Room Audio-Visual Upgrades Bid Proposal from Kelly.
Yes, so just a reminder of how far we've come with this. How far we've come with this. Um, this has been a long time coming. Back in November twenty twenty-two, we started to investigate, um, doing some upgrades to this room, the Civic Room. Um, in order to do things like live stream and record the board meeting. Um, but also to add more flexibility to this room so that we can do Um, programming in here such as lectures and discussion programs like our many book discussions. And have the option to have both in-person and virtual attendees. And we have found Over the last couple of years that we still have a lot of demand for virtual attendance, especially in the winter. Um, with our large senior community in Northbrook, there's a lot of appreciation for options Other than coming in person to events or meetings like this. Um, and so this Proposal is asking for, um, was asking for bids to add in-ceiling speakers and microphones into this room. Um, to sort of address some of the sound and visual issues that we have using the owl, which has been a workhorse and I don't want to offend it. And just to streamline as well setups. Um, we have a listening loop system in our Pollock Room and our auditorium. We do not have one in this space. And so that is something that is included in the bid packages. Um, to add that same loop system into this room. Um, as we discussed many, many moons ago in a board meeting, it does also include removing this table. There's some electricity. Um, that comes up through the floor that we would be Um, addressing as well and adjusting and moving this monitor to this, to this wall so that the orientation of the room Will be slightly different, which again will allow us to have more flexibility with the space. Um, and so we, um, Did a grant proposal with the Civic Foundation, um, and that was awarded for twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we do have the possibility of going back to them and asking them for more now that we know The exact cost of the project. Um, so that is still to be determined. Um, but we do know we have the grant for at least twenty-five thousand. Um, and we went through a bid process. We received two bids, one from Pace Systems and the other Twenty-two tones. Um, Pace came in as our lowest bidder. We do already have a working relationship with them. They Um, did the audio visual in the auditorium as well as the Pollock Room. And, um, we do use their preventative maintenance program as well for those rooms. Um, and we have a good relationship with them. Um, they have a lot of experience with audio visual equipment in public spaces and it aligns really well with what we're doing. The listening loop that they quoted is the same one that we have, whereas the other bid presented a different system. So that would Create some issues as well. So, um, I am recommending that we Work with Pace Systems to do the Civic Room Meeting Room Audio Visual Upgrades. Any questions?
Well, related, but, um, separate. What is this being replaced with? I do remember we had a conversation about replacing this.
We would use our gray tables at first to assess sort of what setups
Okay.
We're looking at, and then we might down the road, look at new furniture, but that's not part of this project.
These chairs will remain.
Yes.
I have, I have another idea for chairs for in here.
But they will not be the gray chairs to sit on for the board meeting.
You gonna get rid of these chairs?
No. I mean, they're just big to store. So there's thoughts.
The board will have comfortable chairs to.
Yes.
I'll remember the Pollock Room.
That's key, Anna.
Thank you. I was shocked at the amount of paper.
I know. You know.
It's astounding.
It is astounding and it's all required. And I, I think we've talked about this in the past, but there's Been movements to up the bid threshold in other governmental organizations like schools and park districts and ours still in libraries remains at twenty-five thousand. And for a project of this size, it was a tremendous amount of work For us, but also for the workers Um, to have to align with the, all the public bidding requirements. So it wa, it was an interesting process to go through. Um, and pretty eye-opening and I, um, I really commend all the folks that are doing that kind of documentation for their work day in and day out.
If there are no additional questions, can we get a motion to approve Civic Room Audio Visual Upgrade Proposal from Pace Systems and the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars plus one thousand dollars alternate as the lowest responsible bidder?
So moved. Oh.
Get a second?
Oh, second.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Glauber?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the Civic Foundation Room Memorandum of Understanding.
So, as I mentioned last month, um, Civic had reached out. Um, they are in need of space to hold their meetings. And so I spoke with, uh, several members from the board. And they are, um, they would very much like to meet at the library. Now we know that we have room rentals that anyone can use. Civic, of course, has plenty of library cardholders in their ranks. They very much want to have the consistency of being able to meet in a place and know that they will have a space. And so they, um, I put together a memorandum of understanding for the board's consideration. They have two meetings each month, one for their executive board and then general membership meeting. And then one for Northbrook Days, which is, as you can imagine, a year-round endeavor to plan. Civic has been part of the library since our, its inception. And in fact, Um, we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude, I would say, to Civic. They really helped with getting the referendum passed for the library. Um, in nineteen fifty-two, they also have helped, um, numerous times with various funding opportunities for buying buildings, upgrading buildings. And have been a strong partner with us, hence why this room is named Civic. Um, and so what they are asking for is really a minor adjustment to our policy. Um, they're asking for, to be able to kind of book rooms slightly further in advance than we typically allow. And they're asking for a few additional people to be allowed to be able to check in, which is anyone on their board. Um, we usually limit it to two people. So this way it allows for them for flexibility. They have minimal setup needs. They're not asking for any additional special considerations. Um, we, I've spoken with the staff that would be overseeing this. They actually feel that it would actually be simpler because they would only be Usually every time we get a room booking, we have to approve it. So this would be doing it once a year instead of doing twenty-four. So it would actually possibly save a little bit of staff time. Um, and as you can see in the MOU, it's, it's pretty clear. And I, the Civic Board Thought it was, it was good. They had no issues. Um, and if the board approves it today, it would then go to them for approval and then we would hopefully Start hosting them in September. I am recommending that the board adopt this. I know that this is a deviation and does potentially open the door for future Requests for modifications like this. I do think that this is a very unique Situation in an organization that has served Northbrook for so many decades. And that has such close ties and it was so foundational in starting the library. So, um, I recognize that this Is not a huge ask, but also something that, um, could have ramifications down the road. I don't think that it will, but I just want to recognize that that Is something that I, I do see as a possibility.
What, are they willing to, um, shift rooms if they have to?
We, in the MOU, it doesn't say that they get Civic.
Yeah.
Like with the bid proposal, right, that we're going to be doing some construction here. It might fall on some, it'll be a couple of weeks. It might fall on some of the meetings. So we are just saying that they will have a room. And we will try and have it be this room, which would be cool, but otherwise it would be Pollock or their interactive classroom. Um, and we would adjust as needed. So just like any other patron.
We get a motion to approve the Civic Foundation Room Rental Memorandum of Understanding as presented for a period of five years from the date of execution.
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Thanks, Maura. Looks like we just need a voice vote for this one.
We do, because no money.
Okay, all those in favors, they aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, they nay. Great, motion passes. Excellent work. And what a great way to honor our relationship with Civic. Um, okay, moving on to Fifth Star Collective Monthly Statistics Project Proposal.
So, as the board may be aware, we have a new strategic plan. It's very exciting and it makes me very happy. This is something that is part of our year one strategic plan goals. Kelly and I have been speaking with Mallory Edgar from Fifth Star Collective, who has, um, a, not only a strong Um, data analyst background, but also has worked with libraries and Has helped with Illinois libraries present for the last two years and helping us collect and analyze the data and streamline the process. Um, so we know one of the things that we want to do with the strategic plan is not only streamline how we are collecting monthly statistics, but look at How are we assessing the, um, success of the strategic plan initiatives? And so that is what this proposal entails. It entails looking at our existing processes. Putting together a data dashboard that will be available to the board and, um, and parts to the community and to the staff That will allow us to easily gather and, um, analyze and use data to make Informed decisions and to be able to look at not only what's happening month to month, but to start to be able to more quickly and easily see Overall trends. Um, the total cost is twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and it is, um, I will say that Mallory tends to quote on the high end because she adds in Extra cost for kind of miscellaneous, like things we might not have thought of before. I will say that our staff do often, okay, me as well as other staff do often have other questions. I don't anticipate us going to this amount. Um, that being said, I think that what she is doing is setting us up for success Long-term and being able to, um, streamline how we're collecting data. For instance, um, programming, like pigeon programs. We currently have staff enter the data in for the programs that they oversee. Then each department runs a report every month and then we enter it into an access database. From the access database, we then pull that data and we use it for things like sharing with the board or Putting in the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. There's a lot of, um, Duplicating of typing in and manual, which is not great when it comes to data, as you can imagine. And so what we want is to really streamline that, which will not only Make our data more reliable, but will also free up staff capacity. And make sure that we are able to trust the data that we have coming in front of us. I trust it like pretty well now, but like It'll just further solidify that trust. Um, and So that is what we are recommending. And I don't know, Kelly, would there be anything else that we should add?
No, I think you covered it all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to answer any questions. And it is in the budget. I think I put that in mine.
Is the idea that they would set everything up and then over time, the library would just maintain this dashboard?
Yes.
Yes.
So the, um, so Mallory created the Illinois Libraries Present Dashboard for us, which is beautiful. And she has written the most Amazing instructions that anyone, even if you've never like touched, uh, you know, an Excel spreadsheet before, could easily Use and has screenshots and step-by-step. And so she will be working with us Not only to assess our current process and build this data dashboard, but teaching us how to actually Update it and make sure that we can do so. I mean, she's always, if we needed to contract with her, if there we ran into an issue or wanted to add an extra. But it will be giving us the tools and, um, I really think that it's going to streamline the number of people that we have kind of inputting data. Because really you should be getting the data from the source and just putting it in. There shouldn't be a lot of
And this is built out within our own web environment.
Um, so what the plan is, is that because we live in a Google world here at the library, we will be using Google Looker Studio. So not quite as fancy as Tableau, but is much more accessible to those of us that are not data analysts day-to-day. And very easy to update and maintain within our system.
So for those of us not familiar with any of that?
Yeah. So basically, um, it is a Tool, much like any Google tool, that you can have, um, someone with limited familiarity up to developers use. And so there's many different levels. So she'll be able to set it up for us, but the interface is easy. So we'll be able to just Take a spreadsheet and put it in and it'll just pull all the data and then do all the magic stuff that she will set up for us. But if we need to like, oh, we want to look at a five-year trend or a ten-year trend, it's easy, an easy enough interface That we'll be able to navigate it. Once we have kind of a demo, I can, um, she'll be coming to the board meeting and we'll share once we have Something that we can kind of show. Did any of that, did?
A little bit. So, I mean, the key word that we all hear all the time now is AI. So just going to incorporate some form of automation that Allows you to simply and easily kind of query for additional
Yeah.
Insights from the data.
Because it's in the Google environment, it would use the inherent Google AI. Um, and I've used Looker Studio just a little bit and a lot of it, um, Is bot-driven. Like it, it helps you get to where you need to be. There's a lot of, um, Learning that's already been done with the program. Um, so that if you're trying to create, say, a bar graph, It's already helping you know which numbers to plug in where. Um, so it's very intuitive even for those of us who aren't data analysts.
So this is the public view of the Illinois Library Presents Data Dashboard. And so as you can see, she worked with our data numbers team and it explains things. You can also limit. So like, let's say we only want to look at Northbrook. We can see that last season, we had three hundred and eighty-three people register and two hundred and thirty-three attend. Um, and you can see here how many people attended live. And then it starts showing you by, um, event, it won't show some of these for just individual libraries. Um, and so it allows you to really quickly and easily. And before the data numbers committee used to spend days taking and organizing all the data. Now they export it from Zoom and they can, within like an hour to two hours, Take and have all of this updated. So like, within a day after an event, everything is available to all of our two hundred-plus member libraries. And so Mallory worked with them to develop not only the look. Um, and then also we have a lot of, um, what we call our proportionally attributed data, which is How many people watched, um, after the live, when they watched the recording? And what does that look like? Season four is empty because it hasn't started yet. It starts next month. Um, but then you can kind of see by library what it is. Um, and you can scroll down and it will show you all of the libraries in here. And, and then you can compare, um, library to library as well.
And the, this is data that we have to report on the IPLR on an annual basis.
Correct.
It's pulling all of that together without any kind of manual intervention. Which currently we have
A lot of.
Manual intervention.
And, and, and this for our two hundred-plus member libraries, we also worked with the state to make sure that it was representing. So people wouldn't have to do any extra work. And that's something that we'll also be doing with Mallory, is making sure the way the data is collected and presented Simplifies it. Right now Kelly spends A lot of time manipulating based on the different ways. So this will do a lot of that cleanup and, um, Modification. Just to help give a better. Okay, good.
I think it's exciting. And you pulled up the number of people at the pigeon program instantly.
Right.
So that was exciting.
It wasn't instantly. She had to go through a lot of steps.
Yeah. No, we're not going to have that level of granularity on the data dashboard, but But we could see how many adult programs this month have, we've had and how many people have attended, for instance.
I think the whole thing is.
Yeah. The key is the flexibility. And I imagine Mallory is very on top of like learning, you know, and keeping up with what is new and going on in the industry. So Even in the two years that I've worked with her with ILP, she's like, oh, and then this, you guys should think about this. And, and it's like, oh, so.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion to approve the Fifth Star Collective Monthly Statistics Project Proposal for a cost not to exceed twenty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars as part of our strategic plan project work as presented?
A second.
Thanks, Stacy. Can we get a roll call vote?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Becker-Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu.
Yes.
And moving on to the Village of Northbrook payroll change.
I have put together a, oh. Okay, that sounds great. I have put together a, we just got Microsoft three-sixty-five, so I'm making sure the subtitles are working. A quick presentation before we dive into things. Like, I should, well. Should I wait for Maura?
Let's wait for Maura.
We're going to wait for Maura for just a minute and see if Janet has any fun pigeon facts.
There's such a thing as pigeon racing.
That is a thing I learned.
Oh. I did not know.
Do pigeons, like, they don't seem to fly a lot.
They have, they do have a homing instinct. You probably knew that, for homing pigeons. And that's how they race them. They take them far away from there.
Oh.
And they sort of release them and they.
It's a long-distance race.
It's a long-distance race. I will tell you that jokingly say we could send it by carrier pigeon.
That actually is.
Carrier pigeons actually went extinct quite some time ago, but.
Oh, it's a specific breed of pigeon.
But, but pigeons, somebody did ask about carrying messages. And the volunteers said, only if you, you want it to go back to their home. Home, like they, they have a homing instinct. They're not going to go to, you know.
Your house.
Your house, just because you.
So you're saying?
Unless your house is their home.
You're saying that Game of Thrones is lying to us?
It may be.
Those were ravens.
And, and.
Think that's their version of pigeon.
Yeah.
Pigeon pants cost twenty-four dollars a pair.
There you go.
Thank you.
But they come in a variety of patterns.
And they were indeed colorful. Yes, I can tell you they were very colorful.
You can also buy leashes.
Are they just?
Yes, and, and these pigeons were on leashes.
And you verified that they were real and no conspiracy theory robots?
They were quite real, as best I can tell. They also have a size range.
I guess technically, yes.
Also getting the, you know.
Had a picture of the rack in her home. Different sizes.
Imagine body shaming your pigeon.
I know.
You're in size fourteen today, what's going on?
I should also say that the volunteers made it clear that they're not very big fans of pigeon racing because.
Sure.
It's not humane.
Not very humane.
Right.
Sounds like dog fighting in pigeon world.
A little bit.
Maura, we just learned so much more about pigeons.
It was amazing.
You don't have to leave a good deal.
I'll have to.
History.
Okay. Okay, so I just put together a short presentation to kind of give, because there was a lot of information that I've shared with the board. So to hopefully kind of simplify things a little. So I'm going to start by talking a little bit kind of about timeline-wise, what, what has been happening, what it would look like before going into what we do know, what I've learned from other libraries in the last couple of weeks, and then what we still don't know and some of the potential next steps. So what we know timeline-wise is that in, at the end of July, Anna and I met with the village and that is when they informed us that they will cease processing payroll as of the end of this year and that we, they will no longer share the FEIN with us. We, at the time, thought IMRF would be staying the same. Then shortly thereafter, learned that we also will need to be managing our IMRF pension independently. That might be a little bit challenging and I'm going to go into that in just a little bit with some of the stuff that I've learned. So earlier this year, the village did, in the board meeting in April and May, make, moved to a cloud-based system for payroll and moved to hire a consultant. That is what the village manager has reported is kind of the impetus behind this, is that they have received this assessment. She was unable to share it with me, but she said that the assessment said that it was not, that they were not going to be able to continue doing the library's payroll once they moved to a cloud-based system. The board has as much information as I have that was received in the letter from the village manager. So then, looking at this, what this looks like in terms of a timeline is that within the next four months, getting our own FEIN set up, researching and implementing a new payroll system and getting all of our staff trained on that to start using January first, well, January second, because we're closed on the first. And then also, setting up potentially a new IMRF portal as well as a new IDES portal. The timeline, as you can imagine, is very tight and very challenging. And so we did express that to the village and, and they did say that they wanted a clean break in order to be able to not have to have two sets of W-two's next year. They will run our W-two's for us in January of twenty-twenty-five, but wanted everything to be completed by then in order to be able to move cleanly into their new system. They are planning to migrate to the new cloud-based system in spring of twenty-six. So, so that is the timeline. And here is what we know. We know that we can get an FEIN number, which we have not started doing yet, but which we know and have looked into. At first, at one point, I was told that we couldn't, but we have since learned that we indeed can. From a payroll perspective, Anna has started researching and looking at different systems. We don't have a ton of information on that just yet. And we do know that while we could make anything, anything is possible, especially when we have like Anna, Kelly, Becky and I working on things, I think. It would be very challenging to get stuff put in place by the end of this calendar year, just from the perspective that we've not done payroll here at the library in over fifty years. This is something that we also want to make sure that we're getting all the data we need from the existing system. And so this is something that we know the village wants us to do and know that it would be very challenging. We do know that there will be costs associated with it. We don't yet know what all those costs are. In terms of IMRF, what we know is that the village wants us to be our own IMRF authorized agent and to manage our own IMRF pension fund. What we don't know is if that is possible. That is something that I'm, will tell you about in just a few minutes, but I don't know. I've tried contacting IMRF and haven't had luck and have found that no other libraries are managing their own that is a village library. IDES is the unemployment portal for the state. We do have our own unemployment insurance through Limerick. The village has always managed our IDES reporting and we, Lori gives it to them and they then share the information with us. We do know that we need our own FEIN number in order to set up our own portal. We currently don't have accesses, access to the village's portal, so we've just given them the info and then they would input it and then they would report back to Lori any information received. So that, we know we can't do until we get that FEIN number. From the perspective of our health insurance, we are part of the IPBC pool, which is a pool of municipal libraries and other municipalities, which include libraries. We are separate, we are listed separately than the village, but we do follow what they offer. And so we have not yet researched whether or not there are any ramifications with that. We don't think that there are. Our attorney doesn't think that there are, but it is something that we still have to dive deeper into. I've been focusing more on the IMRF piece and figuring that out because that seemed more pressing. So, so what we know is that there is some things we know, some things we don't know, and still more to figure out. So I reached out to the eighty-seven village libraries that are in the state of Illinois. I did a quick survey and analyzed a little bit of it. So this is part of that. Because I thought it would be helpful to kind of know, what do other village libraries do? In the state statute, we know that legally, the village has kind of two areas of responsibility when it comes to us. One is passing our levy. They must pass the levy that the board has approved. And then the other is they must assist us in taking out any bonds that we require for the construction projects. Other than that, there isn't anything specifically coded into the compiled statutes for village libraries. Just as a reminder, there's four types of libraries. Village libraries are one of the smaller percentages. There's six-hundred-and-nine, excuse me, six-hundred-and-nine public libraries. The sixty percent of those are district libraries, so they levy their own funds, they're a separate, that's why we have so many units of local government in Illinois. Then comes village, then comes city libraries, which is about twenty-something percent. And then village libraries are eighty-seven of the six-hundred-and-nine. And then the last is township and there's only like four of them. So they're, they're pretty small. So there aren't a ton, but there are eighty-seven. So I've heard, from like I said, about half of them. So what I learned is that about two-thirds of them have their own FEIN number, but a third, like we do currently, do share the same FEIN as the village. I also learned that when it came to payroll, it's about a sixty-forty split. The blue is the amount of payroll that the villages manage entirely and the library either has access to the villages' system and inputs directly or sends it. There's twenty libraries that manage it on their own. Two of them actually manage it entirely, but share a system with the village, but they just pay the village for it. So it's kind of theirs, but not entirely. So like I said, it's about a sixty-forty split in terms of sixty percent of the libraries do it completely by themselves, forty percent do it with the, through the villages. A hundred percent of the libraries that offer IMRF, there were a few libraries that reported in that don't offer IMRF, that they weren't part of it. The village manages their life, their IMRF. Now, some of those do also have an authorized agent at the library, but the village is the, I don't know what the right term is because I haven't been able to talk to IMRF. The village manages it and they're part of the village's IMRF pool. So they're included with all of the other employees of the village who are in IMRF. So I am, from reading an IMRF, I am not sure if we can separate. But because I haven't been able to get a hold of anyone there, because we don't have our own account, it's been a little challenging. But I've talked with our attorney, who has someone who works regularly with them, who I'm talking to tomorrow and hope to learn more. From the perspective of unemployment, it's almost a fifty-fifty split in terms of who manages that, the village or the library. I think it's interesting that even when the library does their own payroll, the village is doing the IDES piece. So it's, local government is fascinating. I know that health insurance shouldn't be impacted by this, but I decided to be thorough because I also am fascinated by this and have always wondered about this stuff. So with this, about forty percent, thirty to thirty-five to forty percent of the libraries that reported make decisions and manage their own healthcare. About fifty to sixty percent make the decisions, have the village make the decisions and manage the healthcare. There's a couple libraries where they have a, kind of a, more of a blended model. But as you can see, again, it's not all one or the other. And so I think that that is important to note. The village, we have always, in everything that we've done, tried to model ourselves after the village, recognizing that they've done the payroll for us for so long and recognizing that they do do like the IDES and the IMRF to try and make it as easy as possible, since they have not ever charged us for it. So this is something that we currently decide coverage, but the village manages it, but the coverage we've decided on mirrors what they do. So that is what I learned, like big, big picture, from local libraries. If you're ever interested, I have a bunch of other stuff that I haven't finished analyzing yet and it's fascinating. So here is what we don't know. While we're pretty sure getting an FEIN number will be quick and easy, that has not, we have not done that yet because we wanted to wait until after speaking with the board and kind of just determining next steps. That is really the first thing that we would need to do for almost anything else. What we don't know is also, as I mentioned, the cost for payroll. But I'm going to have Anna speak in just a minute about some of the stuff that she has already started putting together is to start analyzing that. We don't know about IMRF. I think, right now, I feel like it's like a fifty-fifty chance of whether we can. And I think either way, it will require more, of course, more communication with the village about what this looks like and how do we separate that out? I will say that being on the Rails Board when, shortly it was, after it was founded and they started with IMRF, because they were technically a new institution, even though it was a bunch of library systems combining, their IMRF rate was super low, which was glorious. So they saved a ton of money. And our rate now is at, I should know this off the top of my head, like eight percent. In Rails, it was like under two percent for a good seven years. So, so that could be. But we know that we can set up an IDES portal once we get the FEIN number and, but we don't know how long that will take. We are assuming that that is also easy and we'll have to confirm on the health insurance front. So there are still some things we don't know. But one thing we do know is that we need to think about what all of the different steps are. So I'm going to actually, I realize I got rid of the slide because I was supposed to do it under here. I'm going to have Anna talk here about some of the stuff that she started researching with Becky on different payroll systems already. Oh, yeah.
Can I interrupt before? I, I think the fact of the matter is, we have to do this. I mean, the village has basically said.
The village manager has told us that it must be done.
Okay.
I think the thing that we would like to ask for is more time.
Okay, and that makes sense, but I think.
It doesn't make sense, I'm going to disagree with that. After fifty years of history, they're arbitrarily deciding it must be done now without a rational explanation, doesn't make sense.
Because, well, they're not implementing it until twenty-six, right?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So why do, why do we have to be off of it a whole year earlier?
Well, that presumes we even have to be off of it, but.
It's because their consultant explained to them that having an outside organization be a part of their migration to this cloud-based system is not prudent. Because I believe the word.
Yeah, someone's saying we don't like the risk, whatever the risk is.
And I think it's fair to say that there is always any time you do something.
That risk has been in existence for fifty years while they've been doing this.
That is.
And so this decision now is just an arbitrary one. This sounds to me like a village manager who wants to offload some of the work that they're doing, as opposed to any real issue with risk. Because if you have a fifty-year history where the risk hasn't proven to be high, this has nothing to do with risk. That's an excuse, not a rational reason.
And I think that's one of the questions that we're hoping to get to and when we get to discussing the letter to the village board is why have they given themselves sixteen months but expect us to do the same thing in four months? Because I don't, and I could be wrong, but in conversations with Kate, none of us are opposed to making this move, if that's the best thing for everyone. But to say it's best practice for the village to have sixteen months to find an ERP to implement, to do all these things, but, oh, you have to figure it out by December thirty-first, good luck.
Yep.
Just seems really unreasonable.
Agreed.
And inconsiderate.
Yes.
And the reason I interrupted Anna, and I'm sorry to do that, is that that's all kind of meaningless to me.
There.
I don't need to know what, I, I need to know how you and Anna are going to either find someone or how you're going to do it.
How are we going to navigate through this?
Okay, so I, I can kind of answer that.
Okay.
So we, Becky and I, I, I put together a document that Kate, Kelly, Becky and I can just kind of put all of our thoughts right now down on and giving us like the month of August to kind of pull our thoughts together. Because, you know, like I put all my thoughts down and then just like two nights ago, I had two more thoughts of what I needed to put on the list. And then in September, what Becky and I are going to do is we're going to reach out to three to five payroll companies. We're going to share this list of thoughts that we have and we're going to ask them to do presentations for us and then. And then we're going, we're going to see which one will best suit our needs. My goal is, if this has to happen by December, the goal would be to start a conversion process in October and November. Then in December, do testing and training with staff, so that by January first, this can happen. So it, it is, it's very tight and it's, and it's very arbitrary why the village is doing this. I mean, one of the things that they said to us in the meeting was the preliminary findings from the, from Baycor, the consultant raised concerns regarding the use of the village FEIN for individuals not employed by the village. And, and you know, so like, it's, it's the, the risk that they're trying to deter, like come up with, it's been around for fifty years, like why is this all of a sudden issue? And there are sixty libraries that are doing it. So I, I, you know, it, it's just what they want to have happen.
No, it's a separate entity and it's all different. How does the, does the park district go through the village or are they independent?
District is a separate district, so they levy their own taxes.
Okay.
And, and so it, it is complicated. More, I would not have expected you to know that. So they, they are their own independent unit of local government. We are what is considered a component unit. And so we are essentially like a sub, but we are separate in that the library board is elected. And you have statutory authority from the state on what you can do and what your powers are. But because we're a village library, the village also has responsibilities. It is, it is complicated if you read the laws. I mean, it is, it isn't complicated, but it also is not as cleanly worded as you would like. So this has been in place, I mean, we've been a village library since we were founded in nineteen fifty-two. So some libraries like were one thing and then became something else. We've always been a village library. This has always been. We've always shared the FEIN number and always shared the IMRF portal. And so that, that is, is consistent from our inception. We've never had a formal agreement with the village, which technically we don't need to have. But that is something that I've looked for, and there isn't anything either in the village's documentation or in ours suggesting that there was ever a formal intergovernmental agreement entered into. It was just done at the board meetings, which is still authoritative.
Has there been any discussions with any of the village board about this? I mean, between our staff and the board directly?
No, we did not. I did not feel that that was appropriate to do because the village manager came to me and I know that if someone in another unit of local government came, I would feel mighty upset if they.
But I mean, should it be that we, the board, have conversations directly? I don't mean a letter, because I think a letter is waiting too long and taking too long. I mean, you know, have a meeting with, you know.
You know, Catherine and other trustees.
Yeah. Because, you know, to what extent are they involved in this? To what extent are they aware of it?
Yeah, and that I don't know.
Right, do they agree with the approach, like with their, what their sentiments are towards the approaches?
I mean, it just, the way it's being handled is mind-boggling and considerate. Not to us, just to us, but to the employees, to the staff.
Yeah.
The fact that you're talking about it may interfere with benefits that are being provided, you know, in terms of how they're actively.
I do not think that there will be any impact on benefits, like any interruption.
IMRF is a benefit.
It is a benefit. I, we will make sure that there is no interruption or impact for staff, no matter what it takes from our perspective.
Yeah, but it's a good point to raise.
It is. I just don't want staff to feel like there's any potential for.
I, I certainly think that we need to communicate directly with the board trustees.
I would agree.
I did, well, and I, just to kind of talk about, so these are the immediate next steps that I feel are needed. Communicating with the village on what the timeline is. And I think that that does make sense to come from board to board, establishing what is possible with IMRF and confirming whether or not we can even separate. And if not, what that looks like. And then I think codifying what is happening in a formal agreement. Right now, I have an email from the village manager, but I do think it would be prudent to have a more formal document, since the boards of both agencies, even though this was decades ago, did formally approve to adopt and do this. I think it would be good to have a formal agreement. And then thinking about moving forward, what does that look like? I met with the village manager yesterday to talk about communication and some of the challenges that we have experienced at the library with some of the communication. And I expressed to her how important I felt it was for us to have open lines of communication between our two organizations and the need for more relationship building, recognizing that there's a lot that has gone on in the last few years. There's been a lot of changes in staff. And while we have prioritized that on our end, I think that this shows that there is, this and other things show that there is a need for doing more of that. And, and you know, and asked her to consider, you know, ways that we as the leaders of the organizations could model that with our staff and also thinking about ways that we could come together. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, we have the same goal, right? It's serving the community. It's helping each other.
Yeah, but it's not the issue right now.
No, and I, I did bring this up. It was, it was not, the conversation was not terribly well received.
I, yeah, I, I don't, I think right now it's focus on this and then communication and the feel-good is later, because they've already kind of played their cards. But I wouldn't spend any more time and energy on.
And as much as Kate, you were saying, like, you guys are trying your best not to impact our library staff. You and Anna and, and Becky and you guys, you guys are also library staff. You are necessarily being put at the crisis situation. This is not okay. Like this, yeah.
I think we, I think we need to keep our eyes on the prize. I think we do, kitchen sinking is not a great idea right now. Although I do believe that ongoing communication challenges do need to be addressed, but perhaps.
We've got to deal with this first.
And I do believe we need to communicate with the village board.
There's one thing to say that we want you to be under your own EIN, and we want to work with you to do it. It's another to say, we're just discarding you and you have to figure everything out on your own. They could just usually say, we're migrating to a new system. As we migrate, here are things we need to do to separate some of the risks that we perceive. They could have taken us along on their, you know, new cloud-based system so that we would benefit from it as the same way that they would. But saying we want you in that process to have your own EIN, to deal with IMRF on your own account, all that kind of stuff. And that's not what they chose to do.
That's right.
Agreed, yeah.
I think. Conversation.
I do think it is reasonable to ask for the same timeline as what they are giving themselves.
Or even, I mean.
Or, or even a little, I mean, whatever, but just not four months.
Four months, yeah.
And it is their right to choose to do this. And I think that.
But Kate, there's a long history.
How is it benefiting, how is it benefiting the community?
There's a long history of the two working together.
Absolutely.
Scratch my back, I scratch yours. We're part of the same community.
Collecting the same tax dollars.
Yeah, and this just seems to be, you know, a decision made without any consideration for that longstanding relationship and, you know, what it means going down the road. And this is a newer village manager, been in a position like a year, two years at most.
Three years.
Three years isn't that long.
I think it is unfortunate, and I think it's unfortunate because it will, no matter what the timeline is, whether it is a little bit longer or even, you know, through the end of twenty twenty-five, it will mean us stopping other things that we want to do to serve the community. So instead of being able to work collaboratively.
So I guess that, it sounds like we're all in agreement that the timeline, they've, at the very least, the timeline is unreasonable. Whether or not the initial request is unreasonable, at the very least, the timeline is unreasonable. Do we want to start with the timeline or do we want to try and argue with the, being sort of having to do this independently?
I think the timeline, I think they've pretty much.
Yeah. Made their, make up their mind.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a combination of both. I, and this is maybe giving a lot of goodwill where I don't know that it's due. I don't know that the village board knows this happened. They've passed resolutions that they were implementing or hiring a consultant and then implementing an ERP. Nothing that I saw in their minutes and I didn't examine them closely. We, Kate did, that's why we have Kate, reflected that they had been told that this was one of the things that would happen, which is why we felt like the letter to the village board of, this is happening, we don't think you know, and it's not reasonable, was a like, put the ball in their court, because we don't think the village manager, for whatever reason, has been transparent with them about impact. And they need to know not only what happened, but see the documentation of the communication, the timeline. Even if they had come to us in April or May with the first resolution of hiring the consultant, that this might happen. And then the second resolution, when they knew it was going to hap, like, why did this take until the end of July when they passed these resolutions months ago?
To me, that sounds like we hired the consultant, we got the consultant's report, and then we immediately acted on it without thinking through it.
As Stacy says, it's unclear to us that the village board is aware.
I agree, but by saying they, I mean the village manager.
Yeah, so we, one of our goals would be to.
Yeah, I think if we're going to do a letter, that that letter needs to be coming like, we'd like to meet with you immediately to discuss this.
And the plan would be to send the letter tomorrow after we, or tonight, I don't know what your line is, but like to get the letter to them.
I don't have anything after the board meetings.
Yeah, I'm going to send some texts. But to make sure that they get it right away, one of the things that I felt very strongly about, and I won't shoulder anyone else with this, was that we needed to have a public transparent conversation that was documented, because the village didn't give us that benefit, which is why I didn't want the letter to go sooner. It's why we didn't reach out to anyone. I wanted to hear consensus, to talk about what was in the letter and to have something we could refer people back to in terms of if we get dumped in four months, which I hope we don't, but if we get cut off from their system in four months, I wanted to be able to point to, we did everything we could to try to stop this and to stop the taxpayers from paying for our two payroll systems. And to take time off of task of a strategic plan, to have people researching payroll systems and FEINs and IMR. I read the IMRF handbook. Nobody at this library gets paid enough to read that.
I guess that's why the taxpayers are the ones who are burdening them.
Right, hey, for one system, why are we implementing a second system to do the same thing we've done for fifty years? We owe it to our community and the people that elected us to be better stewards of money or to at least understand where this.
Why this is happening, like, yeah, like, yeah, we agree, yeah.
So is our goal to get a letter over tomorrow and that part of that letter should say, because it will be from the board?
Sounds like the letters are already written.
It's in your board pack.
And then we ask for immediate.
Could, you know, we'd, we'd like to meet with, you know, the board as soon as possible. And I can, if it helps, and I, Kate can correct us on the rules, but if it helps, we can limit the number of people in the meeting.
We're going to have to publish.
Okay, either way.
I mean, because unless it's just like one board member or two, but I.
Unless it's you and Catherine.
You and Catherine.
Okay.
Which I do think that the board, you know, you can't act independently of the rest of the board. So I think it does make sense to have.
It's going to open a meeting where we can have the two meet.
Yeah.
That could take, my only concern about that is that could take a while, and we've got a very, very.
How many people do you?
Do you, what's the minimum number of, from each board you have to have a joint public meeting?
Well, you would need to have a quorum of each board, which would be four members from each board. A majority of a quorum would be required to, in order, you can have two board members from each board, because we have two seven-member boards that could technically meet without posting anything for the Open Meetings Act, because they're not meeting for, they're not a majority of a quorum. Except that the village board, and I would have to check on the OMA requirements, the village board has subcommittees, and so a committee, if two of the board members were a committee, and if it was a committee of three, a majority of a quorum is two, this is too much. I just realized that this was too much. I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine. I asked.
I think that we could meet with fewer people.
Yeah, but Kate, we could.
And also Stacy can just talk with.
You can call a special meeting to meet with them.
A hundred percent.
I do think it will unfortunately eat up some time. My, my, I, my guess would be upon receiving the letter, the very first thing that they would want to do is sit down with the village manager and ask, we got this letter, tell us what's going on. All of this is going to take time.
About just a phone call.
I was just going to say, could we start with a Catherine and Stacy phone call? Because if they don't know and she's willing to say, let's hit the brakes on this while I find out more, that.
I agree with that. That's why I say, letter with immediate follow-up.
Yeah, you could call and say, listen, we are drafting a letter. Or you could, I mean, you can leave that open.
Yeah.
I would just send a letter over and say, I'm calling to talk to you about the letter I'm sending you. We'd like to have a meeting to discuss this further. And we understand that on your end, you may need some time to prepare for that.
I wouldn't give them time.
I mean, they haven't really given.
I would just say.
I'm just talking about realities. Yeah, of just people, of ma, of having that many, you guys know what it's like when we're trying to set up a special. So then multiply that times two.
I would say, I would err on the side of doing it faster and with less people if that's what needs to happen.
I think part of that message though is, we understand you need time, but we, you know, if we're put in this position.
We have no time.
We have no time, so we need to make this as quickly as we can, you know, which to ours means in the next week.
We can try. I mean, I'm, you're not wrong. I'm just talking about.
Yeah, we don't know how they're going to respond. She may well come back and say, no, we're where.
Well, let me have, I've set up a meeting with the village manager next week. We'll sit down and talk about that and then we'll get back to you, that kind of.
And then the answer is that timeframe doesn't work. It's too long. At least not the way your village manager's presented it to us.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it does not seem like there is as much a sense of urgency on their side. And I, I, you know, I, we have met with them and then I was waiting for more information. And then after like six days, I was like, hey, it would be really helpful to have this because I still don't understand fully what is being asked. So I do think that impressing the sense of urgency, the warranted sense of urgency.
And I think that's part of what's confusing and it's an easy thing to underline in these conversations is we're responding to the urgency that was given to us, but it's not being demonstrated in the way that any of this is being handled. Like, this didn't have to be a formal process.
In this letter, I would think twice about the decision made in Malice. I, I don't think that whole paragraph is, again, it's off the point of. We need to talk about what we're going to, how we're going to handle this rather than.
It is the second from the last paragraph. That, sorry, I'm pulling it up. Yeah.
Fourth.
Oh, got it, got it, yeah.
I think the paragraph before kind of hits the point home.
So, and in full transparency, I wrote that paragraph. Um, I, I'll just, I do think it's, and we can work on the wording or change some of that. I do think it's important to highlight the change in intergovernmental, intergovernmental communication that we've seen in the last three years, because I think it's symptomatic of something else. And it doesn't need, I understand, like, we don't need to like bring in sidebars. But I do think this demonstrates what we've seen for years now. And this feels like, somebody said it earlier, a crisis point of, it didn't have to get this far.
Well, the, the paragraph after the word with Malice and it kind of summarizes that.
Yeah.
We work together to identify. It's, there's a, there's a culture, there's an unwritten rule that this village manager seems to have not absorbed or bought into in that. in that we, we are the village, we are the ones who are advocates for the community. And it's like she kind of stepped out and forgot what the culture is. And the culture in this community is, we all support each other. From the civic foundation to the park district to the.
Yes, to the school.
We do that somehow or other, this was overlooked in the way this was presented. Not what was presented, but the way it was presented, the timeline. Somebody forgot to inform her that this is not how we work. We, meaning the collective agencies in the community. And I, yeah, I think she's missed on helping it to be a constructive change rather than reflecting the way that we don't operate. So I, I think I'll write to Catherine.
I mean, under Sandy's time period in the village presidency, there were a number of times where the village looked at, can we consolidate and merge some of the village? And it was more focused on school districts, but village districts were to reduce the, you know, duplication.
Right, of the administrative cost.
And this is doing exactly the opposite. You know, there has been a thoughtful, you know, consideration in this village of what can we do to reduce taxes in certain ways.
Right, so that we can use that money towards the thing that really matter, which is serving our taxpayers.
Yeah, again, it's a we, I mean, I've never.
Yeah.
We're not fighting or vying for anything with the park district. We perform a valuable service they do, so.
We are doing a fun series with them, starting this fall on wellness, highlighting some of the great programs they do and are super excited.
But again, it's.
Right, that's the we, how are we supporting each other because that in turn supports the community.
Right. I think I make that point.
Yep.
Also, just because you have a consultant doesn't mean you follow everything they tell you, their advisors, they recommend to you. It's you decide on what to implement, taking into, they don't know your, like, the bigger context.
Yeah.
It's like you.
Yeah, the consultant, there's, the consultant wouldn't really understand.
Where would they understand the fifty years or, yeah?
The question is if the consultant understands even the, just general nature of governmental libraries.
Exactly.
I mean, Kate's pointing out this isn't uncommon.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, we've found that there are architects in no libraries and architects that have no idea. You know, there are contractors that know and don't have no idea in, in all different aspects. And I would say this is one of those situations where you have a consultant who is not familiar with.
From a boutique consultant who, yeah.
And a manager who isn't aware either of.
Or is just sort of not choosing, choosing not to.
Well, the consultant has said, and the consultant's the expert, so now we're following the experts.
Knows all, sees all. I think probably this consultant gave the best advice they had in a vacuum without really having any knowledge of context.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's giving them the benefit of the doubt and, but again, we've just got to sort of find out what they say.
The step, Kate, just of dealing with an FEIN, that's an hour-long process at most. So in that type of thing, isn't something I would stress over. The payroll and the migrating the data, that's a bigger issue. Um, you know, the IMRF, the healthcare, those are the big issues.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, the IMRF is.
The big, the biggest.
Yeah, I, I know libraries that have joined IMRF and hopefully it wouldn't be this way for us, but it requires, it's a, it's a long. I don't think that would be the case, this, this feels like a little different, but again, I don't actually know yet.
I was going to say, I, I understand it's a district library, completely understand that. Um, but I do know they run their own system and that's now me.
Yes, and they were a village library until they became a district library after things.
Yeah, but I, I just thought maybe they have a little, since I know they, they sort of do it all by themselves, maybe they.
Yes, could speak to that, of that process, yeah.
That, that's an interesting comment, Kate, because that begs the question of, no, no, you hear me out. The village and this consultant may be thinking that they're pushing us towards that.
Illinois has six thousand units of local government, six thousand. I don't want us to become six thousand.
I agree, but if you have a consultant that they're listening to that's pushing in that direction, that could be asked to do other projects.
And I, a conversation.
And then, I mean, that seems to be something you.
That is something that I think would be, um, that's something that if that were to be something we needed to explore, I've certainly done research on it and have spoken with libraries that have made that jump. I don't, I do not feel that it would serve the needs of the community because it adds another level of complexity. And I don't think that that is necessary. And that being said, our job as a library is to fulfill our mission. So I'm not saying, but I'm saying, I think it would be a shame if that was the route that we had to take. I don't think that that is. I think that we have a strong, long history of intergovernmental cooperation and I do not, um, I, I still have hope that this is the thing that we can.
If you remember Homer Harvey and he was a superintendent of schools in District Twenty-Eight. And he was known, I think he was superintendent for thirty-some years. He never, they never had a contract. Everything was done on a handshake with the teachers' union. Every year, they would agree and that was done on a handshake. And it was renowned as this extraordinary thing, that there was that much trust and that there was no need.
They had a, because Twenty-Eight didn't have it, they only just, they just, did they go back to a teachers' union?
Oh, they did.
Oh, okay.
So they didn't have one and then they did. But for almost thirty, but that was symptomatic of the culture. It was, we do this on a handshake, you know, I think it wasn't formal. I think you mean the staff and faculty, the fac, the faculties and principals and everything was done with a handshake. And so that's kind of like the symbol of how this community has operated. I was an administrator when he was here and it was kind of this, wow. And I think we, we don't need to lose all of that.
When Catherine's father was then the school superintendent.
Mm-hmm, Jim Kaczynski.
Mm-hmm, yeah, for many years, so. We continued, I would say, that tradition of intergovernmental cooperation followed by Larry Hewitt. Anyway, we don't need to list all of those superintendents.
Time for you to call Stacy. Just kidding. You can do it.
So what I'm hearing is I'm going to call Catherine tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
That's what I'm hearing.
And then, so we are not going to send something to the full board, is that what I'm also hearing?
Or do people want to send it?
I, I think you need to send the letter, but I think you may want to have the conversation first saying, we're sending a letter.
So conversation and then send a letter.
Does a letter go to each board? Each village board, more, the village board?
Individually, yeah, they each have individual board emails, so.
So.
And then the board here, of course, will be copied on that.
I wanted to give you a heads up that you're going to be getting a letter.
Yes.
Well, and, uh, let's talk about this before, rather than get a letter and react. And you do that so well, so.
It'll be quite a.
And then we are going to continue, since we don't know and because the time is limited.
Yes.
We will continue pursuing and gathering information and making a plan and.
You have no choice, yeah.
Absolutely. Because.
It's gonna happen, just a question of when.
Yes, so this data gathering is useful at any point. Anything else on this topic? No reason to go into closed session, um, so agenda building for next month. Uh, as a reminder, we will not be live streaming next month, but we will be recording and we'll have the video uploaded to the website because we appreciate people taking well-deserved time off. Um, the, we will be talking about the EDI Pulse survey responses. Becky has taken over the work with Lily and will be presenting the results from Q2 Pulse survey that was administered in June. Um, Hannah and Kate will present about the levy, which is super exciting. So fun. Uh, we will review the closing schedule for twenty twenty-five or the recommended closing schedules. Uh, the, and we'll file account of all monies received and expended during the preceding fiscal year, which is an annual statutory requirement. We have all sorts of fun stuff on here. I know, right? Um, our audit was settled in Fox and we will of course follow up on payroll with the village. Anything else for next month's agenda? Has Janet gotten the pigeons?
Could we, could we get the nice volunteers to bring?
Bring the pigeons.
I will not be here.
Only if they stay for the whole meet.
Wear your pants.
Well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting at eight forty-six P.M.